We are live. Is everyone ready? Mics on green. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. For all those that care to, please stand for an opening prayer. Pledge of allegiance. Let us pray. We come before you with grateful hearts, thankful for the opportunity to serve the people of Republic. We ask for your guidance and wisdom as we make decisions that affect our community. Grant us clarity, unity, and integrity in all that we do. Please help us to lead with compassion, humility, and a spirit of cooperation. In your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and
Thank you, everyone, and good evening. That might have been a little bit too close. So, first item on the agenda for this evening is a legislative update. So, we are going to take the agenda a little bit out of order this evening, and we're going to allow Representative Bishop Davidson to provide us a legislative update to the city. So at this time, we'll introduce everyone, Representative in Jefferson City, Representative Bishop Davidson of the 130th District, our district.
Thank you, Mayor Franklin. I appreciate you guys accommodating me. I'm dressed in shorts and a tee-shirt, and I've got my hat, if you see here. OMLL champs of 2024, so we have a championship to defend. Me and my brothers, we're on a lacrosse team together, and I accidentally double-booked some things. My brother, who's my coach, was like, "You need to be there." I was like, "Okay, let me talk with the mayor and see if I can go earlier during the session." And so, I would have normally dressed up and been wearing a suit, but I'm literally gonna go straight from here to hopefully winning an overly competitive lacrosse game with a bunch of other grown men, so.
That's perfect. We appreciate you being here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, I did wanna wear the hat and, you know, put the hat right there so I could show off to my brother. This is the first time that I've done something like this. I'm actually planning on speaking with the school board on Thursday and then the Chamber of Commerce at the July meeting as well. And the thinking here and the idea here is probably pretty straightforward, right? I wanna make sure that you guys feel informed about what's going on in the state level. I will say, I think you guys are pretty well-informed, not because I've done some brilliant job, but honestly, credit to the former city administrator who seemed to always keep you abreast of what was going on. And I'm happy to touch on those things again, but I also wanted to just normalize communications between Republic City Council and myself, and I wanted this to be, in my last four years of service, if I get re-elected in two years, to be more of a normal process and more of a normal state of communication. And so while I'll give some updates on things that I think are relevant to Republic specifically, on things that I think are relevant to local governments, I guess what I would say is also feel free to just ask questions or let me know what you think needs to be done, because just as much as I'd like to update you, I'd be happy to be updated or happy to hear maybe some concerns or consternations or things that you've run into in terms of challenges here at the city level. So, with that being said, I don't know if it's how you organize the meeting exactly, but if you'd like to ask a question in the middle of something, I'm okay with that if the mayor is okay with it.
For time constraint, could we get legislative update this direction and maybe get questions after, if possible?
No doubt.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. So, the two big local government bills of this year were House Bill 199 and Senate Bill 3. I've gone through them in depth. I will say, I voted no on these bills, and that's because these bills, they get to being pretty big. At least 199, it was kind of a big omnibus bill. And these things get really heavy, and I tend to vote no once they get real heavy like that, because it's always easy to find a few things that you don't like. That being said, it's still relevant to local governments. The biggest thing I would say that's relevant to you guys, because it does have some municipal changes, but those are only for classification for cities, and that's not Republic, would be that there's some public safety pieces. Why, and I guess I wanna start, actually, we passed more bills this year than we did last year, which I don't think it's just always better to pass more bills, but we had gone through a real slump these last few years. There were 46 bills passed last year, this year it was 67. 18 appropriations bills last year, this year it's 16. One fell off because ARPA funding fell off. Another, we actually, we didn't pass it because the House position was that we had already spent too much money, and we ended up going into a special session over that. And so, that's a total of 51 bills, not appropriations bills. The budget itself is $52.5 billion, and so that's gone down a little bit from what the governor had recommended, at about $53.5 billion. But it's also gone up a little bit. We're gonna expect it to go down over the next coming years. The big reason for the increases is that there's been federal money that's come down and federal money that has to be spent by X number of days, or whatever it might be. The most relevant piece of that budget to you all is, of course, the wastewater project, and we'll know in two weeks here. I mean, it's 17th. He has until June 30th to line item veto the budget. The mayor has written a letter of support expressing exactly all the details of why that $25 million is significant for the people of, not just the people of Republic, but also the people of Missouri. I've gotten some other legislators to voice their support. Senator Trent has voiced his support. I think we have every reason to believe that it can get across the line and will get across the line, but I always like to manage expectations, and there's still technically a possibility that it gets vetoed right at the end. I do know the governor's office is, I think, looking to veto a lot within the budget, which I'm wholly against, I'll say. We are in a fiscal situation, and I'm a fiscal conservative, where I'd like to keep a little bit more back, just anticipating revenue dips over the next couple of years. And so, that being said, if you have a connection with Mike Kehoe somehow, or a connection with anyone in his office, and I say that, you know, it's not really a joke, I mean, it's crazy how some of these guys get around, and you never know who knows whom, feel free to reach out to them and let them know the importance of that project, as I'm sure you're all aware. The other big piece for Republic, of course, is within that same corridor, and that's the MM expansion. It's a $10 million expansion. That was part Republic and part Republic advocacy. Have to give some kudos to OTO as well. It was top on their priority list, and they actually helped catch some language at the very end that would've made it basically unexpendable. And law's funny that way. If it would've passed without the right words, then we wouldn't have been able to get the money with or without the governor's signature. 199, I'm sorry, I kinda went off on the appropriation side of things. 199, it's public contracts, local governance, and tax policy. It has things to do with school boards, a lot of county issues, and if you wanna know what those county issues are, we can follow up with that. It modifies some bonding requirements, basically makes it a little bit easier to bond on the local level and streamlines that process. It also updates rules for assessors and planning boards. You've probably heard a lot of talk and discussion about property taxes. Your all's revenue streams are mostly sales tax, so none of that should affect you, but I would anticipate, we've seen some kind of restrictions put on the assessment of property, and I think we're gonna see a lot more of those as time goes on. And even in this special session, we saw more restrictions added onto that. The other big bill was SB 3, but that has more to do with our DMV and DMV fees. It increased those fees from $6 to $9, which is frankly why I voted no on it. I'm not a huge fan of fees. I see them as a form of taxation. But it also prohibits the Department of Revenue from awarding license office contracts to entities with direct ties to DOR employees, you know, current or recent vehicle title agents, and it also authorizes the DOR to extend existing contracts up to five years, which was, I believe, three years, and that allows for a little bit more continuity with our DMV offices. And so if you ever hear, because I hear it all the time, I'm sure every elected official hears, issues with the DMV, you can tell them that there's been some investments made on the state side of things and some policy clarified that should streamline that DMV process. Other than that, there's a lot of different public safety initiatives that were taken. Law enforcement, mutual aid, and operational flexibility, that's less important for us here, but it allows for certain help from outside of a county or across a jurisdictional bound, or allows officers to live outside of the jurisdiction in which they practice. A really big piece for officers is House Bill 419, which is supporting, and this isn't just officers, this is actually all first responders. It expands in-state tuition and education benefits for military families and first responders, modernizes Missouri's health profession. So what it does is it actually allows for them to have their offspring get in-state tuition and basically a tuition discount that hadn't existed before. And the thinking there is, we need more police officers, we need more first responders, and so the state's trying to come up with clever ways to incentivize that. The other big crime safety packages were really St. Louis-specific, and so I don't think have near as of impact here. But what I will say is, there's also a, hmm, sorry, I lost my page here. There is also a piece that I wanted to point out, having to do with loggers. And, as you can see, I've got many, many pages in front of me there. It's the, so what this does is it puts some, this is for police, firefighters, and loggers, it raises the private pension tax exemption for them, which I think is good. It prohibits investment in restricted foreign entities, so you've probably heard about all sorts of, you know, why can't I think of the word, BlackRock, and various entities that go and invest money based off of social parameters or environmental parameters or governing, ESG, that's what I'm trying to think of. What this does is it basically says that it can't be tied to a political agenda. It reiterates that there's a fiduciary duty focused solely on those financial returns. Other things that are relevant, I think, to you and your constituents more broadly, I would say are that capital gains income tax has been eliminated altogether, and so that's gonna benefit, I think, Missourians across the board, because almost all Missourians have some money somewhere in some account that is getting a return and is getting taxed on that return because of capital gains taxes. And I think that is probably the beginning of a broader conversation about income tax. We did look in that direction this year, but the governor, I think, wanted to take some more time to make sure that we really got all of the numbers down to a T and make sure that when we moved forward, we could be completely confident that we weren't gonna undermine our budget. So, other than that, those are the biggest pieces. I will say, I will say, the biggest thing I think that's relevant to us is obviously our appropriations pieces, and that is a, I mean, a genuine monster lift, like that took a lot of work from a lot of different people. And we're gonna try again over this next year to push for the fourth installment. If you know already, we've gotten three, if this is signed, we've gotten three installments of $25 million from the state, and we're going for a fourth, and that was always the plan, five years ago, that was the plan. We're gonna ask for $100 million from the state, or four years ago, I guess now. And I really appreciate the team. We actually had a great meeting, you know, the mayor, Councilman Campbell, we all had a great meeting two weeks ago, a week ago, or something like that, just to really get down into the numbers and make sure I fully understood where all of those dollars are going and what the best strategy would be to kinda land this plane. And so, I think that's probably the most relevant thing for Republic, but all of the things we passed affect not just the city of Republic, they affect your individual constituents and your wards and in the city of Republic as well. And so, I'm happy to take any questions. I'm also happy to talk with you guys offline at any point in time, too. Mayor Franklin?
So, thank you, Mr. Davidson, for coming here after this evening. I guess we're in evening now, so I really appreciate it, especially having our state representative and having that contact and being able to reach out to you and having that in reverse. And so, I encourage council, if you have any questions, you know, feel free to reach out to Representative Davidson, you know, he's very easy to get ahold of, very appreciative of all of his hard work up in Missouri on behalf of, for us and for the citizens of Republic. So we really appreciate you coming here this evening to give us that legislative update.
Absolutely.
And best of luck for the lacrosse.
Yeah, it's the start of the season here, so we got like seven games and...
Hopefully, hopefully those storms hold off for you. I see some clouds out there.
Yeah, I think they will, but unfortunately, my baby brother, he's the best of us, and he's not, he's not in town, he's in Florida, so, and he's gonna be in Florida like the whole season, so.
So you're short, yeah.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, and I'm the old man on the field, so I don't know. I think he was far more valuable than me, but I'm gonna go play my heart out nonetheless. So, thank you guys so much. Do feel free to reach out to me. Some of you, I'm closer with than others of you, and that's not by design. I'd really love to get to know all of you, and so if you'd like to sit down, have a cup of coffee, express your concerns or things that you hear, because you're closer to the people even than I am, and that really is a great value to what we do in Jefferson City. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Davidson. So, next item on our agenda this evening is citizens' participation. This is an opportunity for citizens to speak directly to council on matters that are not listed on tonight's agenda. Out of respect to everyone who is giving their time here this evening, we ask that you keep comments concise and focused and that we maintain mutual respect. Do we have any citizens here this evening that would like to speak to council? Seeing that there is none, I'm going to close citizens' participation and move on to the consent agenda. I welcome the council to ask any questions or comments about items number 1 through 4 on the agenda. Seeing that there is none, I need a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero. Moving on to board, commission, and committee schedule. We have a board of adjustment meeting on July 3, 2025. Our planning and zoning meeting will be July 14, 2025. We have a city council work session on July 15, 2025 at 5:00 PM. We have, our next city council meeting will be July 15, 2025, and then we have a city council meeting on August 5, 2025. Moving on to old business and tabled items. Item number 5, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 25-18 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 800. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council authorizing execution of an agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for maintenance of specified portions of the trail along Wilson's Creek Boulevard.
Thank you, Laura. Does anyone on council have any questions or need a discussion before moving on to final Seeing that there is none, we will move on to final passage. I now need a motion and a second for final passage of Bill 25-18, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. We're now going to take a roll call vote on our computers.
Councilor Gerke.
Motion carries 800. Moving on to new business and first reading of ordinances. Item number 6, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 25-16 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 800. And we have Ms. Haynes, or Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council authorizing execution of an intergovernmental cooperative agreement with Green County for maintenance of certain portions of the Schuler Creek Trail.
Thank you, Laura. Polities, I got a little bit ahead of myself. So we have Karen Haynes this evening to give us an overview.
Thank you, Mayor. Karen Haynes, Community Development Director. The Community Development Department is requesting approval of an execution of an intergovernmental agreement known as an IGA with the Green County Commission for maintenance of those portions of the Schuler Creek Trail located in Green County. The terms of the agreement include perpetual maintenance and upkeep of the trail, including but not limited to routine maintenance, repairs, resurfacing, vegetation management, mowing, and trash removal. The city will maintain all related trail signage, pavement markings, and any other measure to ensure the trail remains safe for the community. The agreement also formalizes the city's responsibility for managing access to the trail, our commitment to work with Green County for requested new residential access, and then also driveways, and agrees to the county's conveyance of right-of-way to the city in a 10-year period. Staff does recommend approval.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Do we have any questions, comments from city council? Seeing that there is none, do we have any citizens here this evening to comment on this agenda item? Seeing that there is none. Pursuant to 3.10F of the charter, staff is requesting the second reading of this ordinance during tonight's meeting. And so I need a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill 25-16 to be held during tonight's meeting, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 800. Moving on to item number 7, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 25-19 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 800. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council amending ordinance number 2463 to reflect an extension of the term for the Farm Road 93 Community Improvement District, CID, from June 30, 2025 to December 31, 2025.
Thank you, Laura, and we've got Ms. Haynes here to overview on this one as well.
Thank you, Mayor. The South Farm Road Community Improvement District, known as the CID, has requested an extension of the term of the expiration of the approved CID from June 30, 2025 to December 31, 2025. This is to allow additional time for the CID to prepare and submit a preliminary plat and infrastructure plans for the fiscal development of the CID district. Following the approval of the extension of the term of the district, the city must, or the CID must submit a preliminary plat for planning and zoning and council approval, followed by infrastructure plans for the city's review and approval. The infrastructure plans will provide a detailed scope of work for consideration of a developer's agreement with final consideration by council. Staff is recommending approval.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Do we have any questions, comments from city council? Mr. Updike?
What was the reason for the, what's the reason for the delay?
The CID needs additional time in order to submit the preliminary plat and then begin working on the infrastructure or engineering plans for the district.
Any additional questions from city council? Seeing that there is none, do we have any citizens here this evening to comment on this agenda item? Seeing that there is none, pursuant to 3.10F of the charter, staff is requesting the second reading of this ordinance during tonight's meeting. I need a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill 25-16 to be held during tonight's meeting, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 800. Moving on to item number 8. So moving on to item number 8, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 25-20 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 800. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council vacating approximately 100 square feet of unoccupied drainage easement along West Farm Road 182, VACA 25006.
Thank you, Laura, and we've got Ms. Fitzpatrick Duncan here this evening to give us an overview.
Thank you, Mayor. Stephanie Fitzpatrick Duncan, I'm an engineer in the Community Development Department. The Community Development Department is requesting the vacation of an approximately 100-square-foot drainage easement. The land underlying this easement would be returned to the existing property owners for their use as they see fit, and there are no adverse impacts to stormwater, utilities, or land use if this easement is vacated. Therefore, staff is recommending approval that this easement is vacated.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions, comments from city council? Seeing that there is none, Mr. Harder.
How will they be notified with the owners of the property?
Once the vacation is recorded, if it's approved by council, we will send those documents to them via mail.
Very good, thank you.
Any additional questions, comments from city council before moving on? Do we have any citizens here this evening that are here to speak on this agenda item? Seeing there are none. Pursuant to 3.10F of the charter, staff is requesting the second reading of this ordinance during tonight's meeting. I need a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill 25-20 to be held during tonight's meeting, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 800. Moving on to item number 9, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 25-2, 25-21 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 800. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council vacating approximately 538 square feet of access easement located at Lot 1 of the Town East Minor Subdivision, VACA 25005.
Thank you, Laura, and we've got Mr. Ruiz here this evening to give us an overview.
Good evening. Patrick Ruiz, Associate Planner. Request has been made to vacate an access easement located at Lot 1 of the Town East Minor Subdivision. The request of vacation is an access easement that's approximately 25 feet wide and is currently present on Lot 1 owned by Town East Center, LLZ, and providing access to Lot 2 owned by Blue Current Credit Union. The reference, access easement, is currently on use for the intended purpose of providing access to Lot 1 from Lot 2. Once vacated, the easement will return the associated rights back to property owner of Town East Center, LLC. Just to provide a quick update, those two parties have created a new access easement to help out with future development of Lot 2 to replace this one if it were to be vacated. So based on that, staff recommends approval of the requested access easement.
Thank you, Mr. Ruiz. Do we have any questions, comments from city council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Gerke.
You said there'd be a second easement, where would that be at?
So it'd be shifted over to the west, I'm pretty sure. I don't have the building plans, but I believe that that's how that, they would access that, and obviously they would lose those parking, you know, stalls that they have on Lot 1.
Thank you.
Do we have any additional questions, comments from city council? Seeing that there is none, we don't, are there any citizens here this evening to speak on this one? Seeing that there is none, and pursuant to 3.10F of the charter, staff is requesting a second reading of this ordinance during tonight's meeting. So I will need a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill 25-21 to be held during tonight's meeting, please.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries eight zero zero. Moving on to new business and second reading of ordinances, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill twenty-five dash one-six by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries eight zero zero. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council authorizing execution of an intergovernmental cooperative agreement with Green County for maintenance of certain portions of the Schuler Creek Trail.
Thank you, Laura. Does council have any questions, comments, discussion before moving forward? Seeing that there is none, and we will move on to final passage, I now need a motion and a second for final passage of Bill twenty-five dash one-six, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Now going to take a roll call vote on our computers.
Councilmember Gerke?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero zero. Moving on to item number eleven, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill twenty-five dash one-nine by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries eight zero zero. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council amending ordinance number twenty-four sixty-three to reflect an extension of the term for the Farm Road ninety-three Community Improvement District CID from June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five to December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Thank you, Laura. Does council have any questions, comments, discussion before moving on to final passage? Seeing that there is none. And moving on to final passage, I now need a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill twenty-five dash one-nine, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. We're now going to take a roll call vote on our computers. Motion carries seven. Seven, I've read seven. Seven one zero.
Yes.
Sorry, I was trying to, I couldn't quite see that. Moving on to item number twelve. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill twenty-five dash two-zero by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries eight zero zero. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council vacating approximately one hundred square feet of unoccupied drainage easement along West Farm Road one eighty-two, VACA twenty-five zero zero six.
Thank you, Laura. Does council have any questions, comments, discussion before moving on to final passage? Seeing that there is none, I now need a motion and a second for final passage of Bill twenty-five dash two-zero, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. We are now going to take a roll call vote on our computers. Motion carries eight zero zero. Moving on to item number thirteen, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill twenty-five dash twenty-one by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries eight zero zero. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council vacating approximately five hundred thirty-eight square feet of access easement located at Lot One of the Town East Minor Subdivision, VACA twenty-five zero zero five.
Thank you, Laura. Does council have any questions, comments, discussion before moving on to final passage? Seeing that there is none, we'll go ahead and move on to final passage. I now need a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill twenty-five dash two-one, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. We're now going to take a roll call vote on our computers. Motion carries eight zero zero. Moving on to other business and resolutions. Twenty-five dash R dash twenty-four, a resolution of the city council authorizing the city administrator to enter into a sub-agreement with the Southwest Missouri Joint Municipal Water Utility Commission for reallocated water storage space in Stockton Lake. I need a motion and a second to take up resolution twenty-five dash R dash twenty-four, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, and we've got Ms. Haynes here to give us an overview this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. The city is requesting approval authorizing the city administrator to enter into a pass-through agreement with Southwest Missouri Joint Municipal Water Utility Commission, also known as JMC, for the reallocation of water storage space in Stockton Lake. Over the last decade, the city has been working with JMC to secure a future auxiliary water source for the city, which includes two point five million gallons per day for the city in the future. In December of two thousand and twenty-three, city council approved the execution of a MOU with JMC as our first step of formal commitment to the project. That's leading up to tonight's consideration by council for the execution of the JMC pass-through contract with the Corps of Engineers. The city's proportional share of the Corps of Engineers contract will be approximately one hundred and thirty-three thousand per year, which has been approved in the sheriff's budget. Staff is recommending approval.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Do we have any questions, comments, discussion from city council? Seeing that there is none. As this is a resolution, we can call this immediately for a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries eight zero zero. Moving on to item number fifteen, twenty-five dash R dash twenty-five, a resolution of the city council approving the independent audit report for the fiscal year ending December the thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. I need a motion and a second to take up resolution twenty-five dash R dash twenty-five, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. And I've got Mr. Ford to give an overview this evening.
Actually, it will be our outside auditors. KPM will be doing it. Unfortunately, they couldn't attend in person. So Sandra Barrera, the audit manager on the project, will be doing this by the teams. I turn it over to Sandra.
Thank you. Welcome, Sandra.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Super. All right. Well, good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council and management who is there tonight. I first want to thank, thank council and the mayor for giving us the opportunity to perform the audit for this year's fiscal year that ended December thirty-first. My name is Sandra Barrera. I am an audit manager, like Bob said, at KPM. I've been with KPM since since two thousand and eight when we were still Davis and Moots, before we merged with KPM. So I appreciate you having me here tonight. I believe most of you have the bound copies, or at least an electronic copy in front of you. I will be presenting via a PowerPoint tonight, but I will tell you the page numbers in case you do want to follow along. So I'm going to begin on page four, which is the independent auditor's report. And this is really the crux of the audit. This is probably what you want me to say and then kind of stop and let you guys get on with your evening. But our opinion now is just right up front. It's the very first thing that you see on page four. So in our opinion, the city's financial statements are are fairly presented. So this is considered an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion. This is the best opinion that you can get. And if you travel down the page into the next page, this auditor's report, it really says a lot, but it does go through the responsibilities of management for the financial statement. It also goes through our responsibilities for the financial statements. And then it has a little bit of other information. So really, this is what the audit's all about, is getting this opinion. I do want to highlight on pages seven through nineteen of the audit report that you have in front of you is the management discussion and analysis. I'm not going to read this to you and not go over it, but I do highly encourage you to read through this. So this is a high-level synopsis that was written by management of the city that covers the financial highlights of the year being audited, as well as economic factors and next year's budget. It really tells a story of what happened without a lot of amounts, like, like I'm unfortunately going to do over the next few minutes. So I'm going to jump to page twenty-three. So this is the governmental funds. So these are the funds that are primarily sourced by taxes. So you'll see that that the total assets of all of the governmental funds combined was about twenty-five point one million. This is actually a decrease of a little more than three million from the prior year. And I've highlighted a couple, couple of the significant areas that changed. And then one thing I forgot to actually mention, on this presentation, I added a couple of columns that you will not see in your audit report. So I added a column here for last year's. So if you looked at last year's report, that's where this comes from, and then a variance column. Just a little bit easier visual instead of just telling you about all the numbers. I'm going to try to go through this very quickly. You know, us auditors like to get into the minutia of the numbers, so I'm going to try to keep it brief for you. As you can see, the unrestricted cash actually went up about two point nine million. And then down here, the restricted cash decreased by about six point four million. I'm going to just kind of show you this restricted cash of three point eight that that is on that last page on the balance sheet. This is what it's made up of. So the biggest reason for that huge decrease is this unspent bond proceeds for the Parks and Rec Fund. So last year, this, this had a restricted balance of six point seven million. These were bonds that were issued last year to be used for the Parks and Rec, mainly the community center and the aquatic center. And this is actually in part of, part of note four on page forty-one, if you did want to look at the entire note that's in the audit report. So going back to page twenty-three, the other big change is an increase of about six hundred thousand in property taxes receivable. Now, this is really, this is about a timing difference. So I believe that in two thousand and twenty-three, in December of two thousand and twenty-three, Green County actually made a couple of payments to distribute taxes. And this year, in December of two thousand and twenty-four, they only made one distribution in December and then made a higher distribution in January. So that's why that receivable is a little higher, and I wouldn't read much into that. Coming down the balance sheet, you'll see that liabilities actually decreased about two hundred thousand. For these balances, that is really negligible. Most of it's in accounts payable. And then down here, we also have a decrease in unavailable revenue. That is property taxes that are delinquent and have not been collected within sixty days of year-end. Okay, I'm going to skip on over to page twenty-six to the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances of these governmental funds. You'll see here that total revenues for these funds was almost twenty-five million. Last year, it was a little over twenty-three million. So it increased almost one point eight million. The biggest reason for those increases are taxes and charges for services. So this tax increase of seven hundred and nine thousand is, that's all of the taxes combined, and it increased about three point seven percent. Within that, it has property taxes, sales taxes, motor vehicle. Property taxes actually increased seven point nine percent from the prior year, and sales taxes increased three percent. So the sales tax increase included the new marijuana sales tax, and there were only three months included in this year's financial statements. So it brought in about fourteen thousand a month. So if we annualize that and say it brought in, on average, fourteen thousand a month for the whole year, sales taxes would have increased about four percent. And then we also have charges for services went up seven hundred and thirty-four thousand. And this is kind of unusual in a governmental fund, because governmental funds really aren't sourced a lot by charges for services. So to see, to see a variance that high is a little bit unusual. However, it is because of the new aquatic center that was, that was built and put into service with those, with the bond proceeds from last year. Aquatic concessions alone were up one hundred and thirty-one thousand, which is one hundred and forty-five percent more than the prior year. And then aquatic admissions was at five hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-five percent increase from the prior year. So that's what makes up that seven hundred and thirty-four thousand dollar variance from the prior year. We come down here, we can see expenses in these governmental funds was twenty-seven million. Last year, expenses were about twenty-six point nine million. It was an increase of only one hundred and seventy-nine thousand. That's, I would say that is consistent with the prior year. But you will see some large swings up here. This one in yellow, one point eight million in the Parks and Rec. Though that variance is really majority of it is made up of salaries and benefits, of an increase of one point one million of the one point eight million. And then other increases that make up that other seven hundred thousand are from tournaments and camps, facility maintenance, commercial insurance increased, obviously because of the new aquatic center and just because of inflation. Then you also have increased expenses from the aquatics concession supplies and the athletic field supplies. And then these items in blue, so you'll see the administrative went down, but fire and police increased. So in the, in prior years, police and fire were part of the general fund. And this year, they were split out to be their own separate funds, because they do have a dedicated sales tax for them. So they were split out. So when that got split out, a lot of these administrative salaries and benefits that are administrative in nature, so when it was part of the general fund, they were expensed up here in administrative. Well, now that the fire and police are split out, they are part of that fund's expenses. So, so these, I believe these net down to about two hundred thousand. So that leaves expenditures in excess of revenues of about two million. And then the remainder of this statement is on page twenty-seven. You'll see down here that the total net change in fund balances is down about two million. So not a lot happened down here in these other financing sources and uses this year. So not a lot happened down here in these other financing sources and uses this year. The big one that you will notice is last year, there was 11.9 million in proceeds for new debt issuances. And that was made up of a direct loan of $2 million with Missouri Transportation Finance Committee, and then that 9.9 million in the Series 2023 bonds for the Parks and Rec. So there was no new loans or new debt issued in these governmental funds during 2024. And that brings the ending fund balance down to 23.7 million in the governmental funds. Does anybody have any questions before we get into the water sewer and electric funds?
No questions.
Okay. So I'm going to jump onto Page 29. And I'm not going to really hit this hard. This is the Statement of Net Position for Proprietary Funds, which is your water fund, your wastewater fund. You'll see that your restricted cash decreased. This is due to some of your big projects. Then on the next page, it has our liabilities. Really not a lot of huge variances on this balance sheet from the prior year. We jump ahead to Page 31. These are the Water and Wastewater Fund revenues and expenses. Again, not huge variances. You come down here and, you know, total operating income was only 400,000 less than last year. That's really nothing. The biggest change was in the charges for services. Of course, we know that there have been some rate increases, so we expect that. Not a lot of changes in the operating expenses. One of the other big numbers on this income statement is the capital contributions due to federal grants. So just in the wastewater alone, this year, they received 23.2 million in federal grants. I apologize for my screen not being shared. I just saw the message come through. So I apologize. So now you can see these variances that I'm talking about. Okay, so, gosh, and I'm just here at the end, too. Get my mouse back down here. I'm just going to go back a couple of slides so that you guys can see what I was referencing when I was talking. So here's that auditor's report. The opinion is right up front. Here's the balance sheet. Those are those, the large variances I was talking about was cash, taxes receivable, and your restricted cash. Here's the excerpt from Note 4 that's on Page 41, just showing what that 3.8 million of restricted cash in the governmental activities is made up of. There's those unspent bond proceeds that are in the Parks and Rec Fund that went, that decreased by 6.7 million. This is the balance sheet that I was referring to and just kind of showing you those, those big differences there. The income statement of the governmental funds, again, there's the big variances. And then you can see over here that administrative expenses went down, but police and fire went up. And then the park and rec expenses went up and what those were attributable to. And then this is the statement that I mentioned. You know, it was pretty, pretty constant down here with these other revenue sources and uses. And last year, there was that 11.9 million in bond proceeds. There's the variances, last year, and the variances for the Water and Wastewater Funds. Then the income statement for those. Again, not a lot of variance in activity, a little bit more in the charges for services, a little bit more in expenses just due to natural, you know, inflation and wage increases. And then down here was that big one, the 23, 23.2 million in federal grant money alone. So I want to jump ahead to the Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards. So this kind of goes hand in hand with those, with that wastewater treatment project. That, you know, 23 million in award money and grant money that you got. 10.7 million of that was in, was federal and in federal expenditures, right? So 10.1 million was actually in what we call the SLR funds or the ARPA funds through the DNR. So you did have a single audit. We did not have any findings in your single audit, so that's, that's a good thing. You received an unmodified opinion. Pages 34 to 61 of the financial statements. Again, I'm not going to go through these or read these to you, but I do encourage you to look through them. There's a lot of information in there. These notes really explain the balances that are on the face of the financial statements and the debt schedules. Other commitments and subsequent events that were not completed as of December 31st or have come to be since then are also in these notes to the financial statements. So before I ask if anyone has any questions, I just want to point out a couple of items. The GASB, which is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, has several new accounting standards that will be effective in the next couple of years. There aren't huge accounting changes in these standards, like we saw in this current year with compensated absences. Some of them are more analysis in nature, might need to be done if, if any of these certain circumstances apply. So I do encourage Council and Management to, to look at those new standards. The big one will be a change in presentation that we will see, not next year's audit, but the following year's audit. Those budgetary comparison schedules will look a little different, and the water and wastewater fund statements will also look a little bit different. I also want to thank Bob and his team in the Accounting and Finance Department for working with us to perform and complete the audit. Obviously, we couldn't do it without them, and so we, we really appreciate their help. And I've been on the City of Republic's audit many times, not consecutively, and I have been for the last, I believe, four years. And then before that, it was kind of off and on. And I really do think that this was the best audit that we've had, and I really appreciate that. And I really, I hand that to Bob and his team, so thank you so much. Does anybody have any questions?
Does anyone on Council have any questions for Sandra? Mr. Gerke?
And this may be a question for you or more Bob. So we have a specific time we have to have this reviewed and approved by, correct?
Say that again.
We have a specific deadline that we have to have this review, be reviewed and approved by?
There really is no deadline, other than we'd like to have it approved by the end of June, because we have a number of state filings to do, and we use our audit in order to make those state filings.
The only thing I would say, and I think, I know it's an arduous process, and kudos to Bob's group and your help, but I think in the future, if we can get it a little sooner, helps to kind of digest it would be my only suggestion. But I know it's a lot of work, and it doesn't happen over a matter of hours, so.
Yeah, it is a ongoing thing to get every, everything collected and written and reviewed and analyzed, but we can certainly shoot for that next year.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gerke. Does anyone else on City Council have any questions for Sandra? Doesn't look like we have any more questions for you, Sandra, so thank you very much.
All right, thank you, and I apologize for my screen for not, not sharing like I should have.
Well, we appreciate all of your hard work on that, Sandra, and I can't see you, but hopefully you can see me. So thank you very much, and thank you, Bob, for all of your hard work on that as well, and thank you to all the staff. Do we have any questions from City Council? Questions discussion on item number 15. Seeing that there is no questions from City Council, and as this is a resolution, we will call this immediately for a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 800. Moving on to reports from staff, Ms. Addington.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just have a few things here. Reminder, have a blast. Week from Friday, it's hard to believe, 4th of July is around the corner. Great job, Bob, to you and your staff. I know, we don't even know the audit's going on. They do such a great job, but I appreciate all the work. I can't even imagine working with all those numbers. And speaking of staff, we have Ms. Laura to celebrate this evening. Laura received her MPCC, which is the Missouri Professional City Clerk Certificate, certification, I guess, program. She's been working on this since June of 2021, and it has been a process. It's amazing how many certifications are required to do her job, and Laura does a fantastic job for us. So this is the highest level of certification in the state, and I just want to bring that attention to her, because she certainly deserves it. She does a fantastic job. The other, other thing that I want to mention is this Thursday, June 13th, the offices will be closed. And then, just like on the council agenda, we do have a workshop on 7:15 that is our next meeting. So the workshop will start at 5:00, council meeting at 6:00. And then I do want to appreciate the passage on the consent agenda. We did have a resolution on there for the wage analysis, so we will be engaging with CBIZ. It is a three-year commitment per the charter that we do a wage analysis, and we'll be bringing those results to Council in the fall. So other than that, everyone have a great holiday.
Thank you, Ms. Addington. Do we have anyone from City Council that would like to add anything this evening? Mr. Gerke?
Just like to say, great job on the audit. Nothing against auditors. You usually don't get a lot of glowing compliments, so I would take that as a big compliment. So yeah, congrats. I know you guys did a lot of hard work, and it's awesome to see the financial progress of the, of the city, so congrats.
Thank you, Mr. Gerke. Do we have any? Mr. Campbell?
I would like to point out the Parks and Rec, they had a big rig night, first one that I was able to attend, which was really cool, the amount of kids and adults that were out there. But what I want to point out is I had a conversation with Liberty Electrical. Three gentlemen were there, displaying their equipment and their poles and stuff. It was really cool. But they told me that this community, out of all the communities that they work in, they are loved the most. And, and I asked them, I said, you know, I asked them if I could mention this, and they did want me to, or they agreed to let me. But I just thought it was just a really cool statement for this community that, you know, we've had quite a bit of power outages this year due to storms, and the fact that they feel really, really loved here versus other communities just was a really cool testimony. So thank you, and thank you for letting me share that.
Excellent. Thank you for sharing that. Do we have any other council members that would like to share anything this evening? Seeing that there are none, I'll be quick this evening. I had an opportunity, I had an invite from Brigadier General Kelly Hagenbeck last week, and I got to go on a nice little tour of the Army Reserve Facility in the 88th Readiness Division over in Springfield. And long story short, it's where the Army Reserves go to take their drill. There were some soldiers there that were on drill this weekend. Quite a few of them were from Republic, and they also bragged on one of our council members from Republic. And so I won't say which one it was, but if you happen to know who it is, they had a lot of great things to say about this person.
I'm sure they did.
Thank you very much, you know, to Gary Combs for that invite to go out and see that important Army mission from the Army Reserves, and to meet so many wonderful people from Republic that were over there on drill weekend. And it's just such a wonderful opportunity to see that, to see their mission and see them in their element as well. So I appreciate everyone that was there. Have a Blast is coming super quick, and so, yeah, hopefully I get to see everyone out there, and then hopefully I make you proud, you know. Hopefully we get some, get to round up on stage out there. So hopefully I get to see you out there. Hopefully we have good weather, and P&amp;Z, I know, I saw an announcement, P&amp;Z is looking for a candidate in Ward 4. So if you know of anyone in Ward 4 that would be interested in serving on our Planning and Zoning Commission, please have them get in contact with either council member or Build's Department, and we'll make sure that we can get them squared away. But we are in need of someone from Ward 4 for P&amp;Z. Other than that, I just wanted to send out a huge thank you to staff in the last couple of weeks. There's just too many different things to list, and so I'll just give that blanket umbrella of thanks to all of the professional, dedicated individuals at this city that are making their best effort and doing a tremendous job in supporting the citizens of Republic. And so thank you very much on behalf of everyone. Other than that, we are going to take a short break tonight. It'll be very short. We do have an executive session this evening, and so no further action other than announcing adjournment by the Mayor shall take place after an executive session that is scheduled as the last matter on the agenda unless otherwise stated on the agenda or is allowed per RSMO Tonight, we'll be going into closed session under RSMO 610.021.3, Hiring, Firing, Promotion or Disciplinary Personnel, Closed Session, Closed Vote, Closed Record, and RSMO 610.021.13, Individually Identifiable Personnel Records, Performance Ratings, or Records Pertaining to Employees or Applicants or Employment, Closed Session, Closed Vote, Closed Record. And so now I need a motion and a second to go into closed session.
Motion?
Got a motion and a second. We're now going to take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Gerke?
Aye.
Councilmember Neal?
Aye.
Councilmember Updike?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Fields?
Aye.
Motion carries 800.